Good morning. Time to start our meeting. This is the regularly scheduled board meeting, Tuesday, September 26th, 2023, at 10:00 a.m. in the Board of Supervisors Hearing Room, 1415 Melody Lane. I'm hearing myself. Is that on your computer somewhere? Okay. Pursuant to ARS 38431.02H, the public will have physical access to the meeting place 15 minutes prior to the start of the meeting. Any item on this agenda is open for discussion and possible action. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The order or deletion of any item on this agenda is subject to modification at the meeting. The Board may vote to recess into an executive session for the purpose of obtaining legal advice from the Board's attorney on any matter listed on the agenda pursuant to ARS 38431.03A and III. I'll begin with the roll call. District one.
Good morning, Madam Chair Crosby.
District two.
Supervisor Inuit is present.
And I am Supervisor Judd, representing District three. Members of the public may attend this meeting via Microsoft Teams, computer, or mobile app, or via phone by calling 602-609-7513, or 888-680-6714. Conference ID 982-267-89893. If you have trouble accessing this meeting remotely, call 520-432-9200 for direction. The Board may permit public comment during the discussion of any item on the agenda. To speak on an agenda item or during call to the public, complete and return, the speaker requests form to the clerk of the Board prior to the start of the meeting. Note that some attachments may be updated after the agenda is published. This means that some presentation materials displayed at this board meeting may differ slightly from the attached versions. Call to the public is the next item. And I have Alfred Kern as our first speaker. Please, as everyone speaks, remember to give your address, your name, and your address. Thank you.
Okay, everybody. My name's Alfred Kern, other at 3460 East Green, Washington, Douglas. I've been coming to the meetings every other week for the past 18 months. And I just want to say first off, what do we have to do to get you to do your job in these? What do we have to do? Are we missing the boat here someplace? Or are you just not doing it? Because it, you know, in the past 11 years, going on 12 years now, you haven't done anything. I think it's about time to start before the next election. Time to start. So, anyway, I don't have too much more to say. Other than we need to get that road. You're principal. We need to get that road greater, period. I don't know what the problem is, but get over it. I don't know how many people in this room, and I think that everybody in this room has heard me up here speaking every other week. They've been here. They've all come to me and said, well, we've heard you, and we're behind you, and we're good, we're good for it. But the people that needs to hear me are sitting up here. And it needs to be done. Shake your head, or shake your head, or nod your head, or whatever. But it's time we start doing something. I don't have Asian notes. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is on Teams. It's Allison Morse. Allison, do you hear us? I'm going to go ahead and call for the next. Okay, I would have given you a chance. You know that, right? But you can go now. Thank you, Allison.
I'm sorry. And I didn't want to, you know, disrupt this system. But good morning, and I'm Allison Morse from Portal. And I do thank you for this opportunity to speak today. During his six-month stint as interim elections director, recorder David Stevens wreaked havoc in our elections department by pushing his extreme political agenda. First, he squandered almost $200,000 of a bogus grant designed to solve a problem that never existed. The public still has no idea how that money was spent or to what purpose. Mr. Stevens has been delinquent in following proper protocols and has failed to provide the required documentation. Then Stevens oversaw the attempted repeal of the Douglas AMA. Whether by ignorance or intention, he supported the later, excuse me, he supported the illegal effort by providing petitions to further the cause, and later instructed newly hired elections director Bob Bartelsmeyer to accept the signed petitions. It took yet another lawsuit to call out this embarrassing incompetency of our elections department. Now, just a few months after his arrival and a few weeks before our next election, Bartelsmeyer is jumping ship. This disturbing scenario is a repeat of his sudden departure from Dona Anna County, New Mexico, where he ditched his responsibilities as elections director just before their primary election, though his application falsely states otherwise. When hiring Bartelsmeyer, Stevens overreached the posted pay scale, offering the new ED an excessive salary of $95,000 in addition to an unprecedented relocation allowance of $10,000, which apparently is not on the current job posting for the same position. Stevens was so intent on fulfilling his political agenda that he turned a blind eye to the blazing red flags on Bartelsmeyer's sketchy job application. So now we must find a qualified, fair, and impartial elections director who can work with David Stevens, a self-proclaimed election skeptic with extremely poor judgment, embarrassing election incompetence, and a complete disregard for proper procedures and protocols. I am respectfully asking county administrator Rizkar Watchka and the Human Resource Department to thoroughly vet potential candidates for election director, verify all data from her employment, contact previous supervisors, and be certain that the person you choose demonstrates unwavering integrity and the willingness to uphold and defend our lawful elections, someone who will stand up to those who want to disrupt, delay, or destroy them with debunked conspiracy theories and disproven lies. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jeff Sturgis. He has also joined us on Teams.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Cochise County Board of Supervisors meetings in the past several months could be characterized as showcasing a bunch of conspiracy-believing folks barking up the wrong tree. Supervisor Tom Crosby and recorder David Stevens seem to have sicked these ill-informed folks upon the other board members. They do so in efforts, it seems, to sow doubt in voters' minds and inject chaos into what was once a trusted and well-respected county election process in our county under the direction of Lisa Mara, whom Crosby and Stevens hounded out of office and replaced with Bob Bartelsmeyer, who has just quit, leaving our election processes in the lurch. These folks, perhaps well-meaning but ill-informed, accuse board members of everything, from election fraud to treason. The fact is that they are asking, usually demanding, that board members do things that are beyond their legal ability to do so, from the end of early voting to discarding voting machines. These laws and rules are established at the state level. These folks need to address the state legislator and the governor to get the rules and laws changed. The Board of Supervisors does not have the power to give them what they want. And if the Board of Supervisors tries to do so, it is certain that the county will be sued again and again, as it has in the past. And who pays? Yep, county taxpayers. Regarding the hiring of Bob Bartelsmeyer and his resignation, I hope other speakers will address this total mess. But remember the 31 previous speakers and citizens who revealed their understanding of how inappropriate his hiring was, initiated by David Stevens, who claimed he was a great candidate for the position. And yes, Tom Crosby agreed and voted accordingly. When is enough enough? Aren't county citizens, taxpayers, and voters finally exhausted from the pranks of election deniers Crosby and Stevens? Haven't they cost taxpayers enough money? Don't we deserve good and fair governance? Don't we want a fiscally responsible and functional system of government in Cochise County? Luckily, there is hope. There are well-qualified candidates who have filed to run against Crosby and Stevens. Is it possible that we find ourselves with public officials who create chaos in our election process while wasting taxpayer money because too many voters vote down the ballot for anyone with an "R" next to their name without further investigating who these candidates are and where their loyalties lie? I urge voters who care about a fiscally responsible and functional system of government in Cochise County to learn more about the candidates challenging Crosby and Stevens.
Mr. Sturgis, your time is up.
It matters. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Joan Ann Murphy. She's also on Teams. Ms. Murphy, do you hear me? If you can hear me, I will give you another chance to speak right next after this next speaker who is here in person. That is Lee R. Chadbourne. Please come forward.
Hello, I'm Lee Chadbourne from Sierra Vista. And this is in referral to the last election. Our mass mail-in voting was never conducted to gain our consent or approval with the Arizona Constitution, Article Four, Part One, Section One, Subparagraph Eight, which then became an unlawful violation of our Constitution as well as your oath of office. So we do not consent to this mail-in ballots. Everyone, everyone registered voter, as it does not follow the chain of custody 100%. Also, verification of signatures by an electronic device or a county worker is fraudulent and inaccurate compared to the accurate requirement for walk-in voters. We do not also consent to the use of voter registration files that have been packed with signatures unrelated to the original signature of the voters that was made at the time of registration. We do not consent to mail-in voting to any person who did not request a mail-in ballot for specific. Do. No, we do not consent to voting centers. And what the Board, please, and we want the Board to please be obedient and follow the Constitution, ARS 16-411B, in restoring precinct voting to all 55 precincts without the use of voting machines or electronic tabulators. We only want paper ballots and hand-counted with Republicans, Democrats, and independents observing. Now, according to ARS 11251, there are only two powers related to election. And one of them is divide the counties into districts or precincts, adding and subtracting when necessary. It also states each precinct must have its own voting's location. Therefore, having a voting center is definitely a violation to our Arizona Constitution. So I'll close right now with Hebrews 4:13 out of the Bible, the Word of God. Nothing in all creation is hidden from God's sight. Everything is uncovered and exposed before the eyes of God, to whom we must give account.
Ms. Murphy, are you online?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
We can. Very good.
I'm sorry. I hit the wrong mic. Anyway, Joan Murphy, 1132 Queal Hollow Drive, Sierra Vista. I know that when I'm speaking, I am also speaking for many others when I say that as a Cochise County voting citizen, I'm very concerned by the real harm done by Tom Crosby and recorder David Stevens. Here we are facing two upcoming elections, and we don't even have an elections director. We, a county that has had perfectly good election system with checks and balances that was run by an excellent elections director, until, that is, Tom Crosby and David Stevens started throwing around conspiracy theories and tried to thwart the law, resulting in court cases that are costing we citizens hundreds of thousands of dollars, money that could and should have been used to benefit the citizenry. For shame, their shenanigans and wastefulness seem to know no bounds. Take, for example, the hiring of Bob Bartelsmeyer as elections director, a man with a spotty employment record who didn't want prospective employers to check his history. That would have been a glaring red light to almost anyone, except, I guess, David Stevens. Now with elections looming, Bartelsmeyer has left us in the lurch, as he has done to others in the past. I could go on, as both Tom and David Stevens have given we citizens lots of examples of bad leadership to speak about. But I'll yield my time to others and just say that I can't wait to vote them out with some candidates, wonderful candidates, that are waiting in the wings. Thank you for letting me speak.
The next speaker is Randall Limbuck.
Good morning, Randall Limbuck, Sierra Vista. We hear all the time from our county bureaucrats of efforts to save taxpayer dollars, but rarely receive tangible evidence of such efforts. You rarely provide the taxpayer evidence of any legitimate cost-benefit analysis. We hear costs in general terms, but never in specifics. For instance, what is the cost-benefit analysis of all mail versus in-person voting? Where is the cost-benefit analysis the county performed when switching from precinct to vote center voting? Where is the in-depth analysis from the Elections Department, Recorder's Office, and/or the Board of Supervisors with all aspects of election integrity? What do these numbers look like after adjusting for inflation? In my estimation, the Board of Supervisors is not dissimilar from most other county departments, and that you tend to pacify the masses with generalities rather than specifics. The illegal jail district tax is a perfect example of these sleight-of-hand tactics you and our county administrator presented to the taxpayer. Unlike the jail tax, perhaps you could conduct a legitimate cost-benefit analysis of all aspects of voting. For instance, what are the actual financial costs of establishing adequate numbers of precincts versus vote centers? What are the tangible and intangible costs and benefits associated with election machines versus humans? Machine count versus hand count? Electronic registration tablet versus paper registration book? Multi-day versus same-day results, et cetera? Each of you owes me and every other taxpayer answers to these questions so that we can state our positions intelligently. Accurate answers to these questions and others are owed to all citizens whose taxes paid to operate this county. Now is the time to put real meaning and effort into the promise that you all made as candidates and continue to make, which is to be transparent. Your constituency expects it and deserves it. Thank you.
Karen? She is on Teams. Ms. Harris?
I am here. Good morning to the Board and to all the people in the audience. I'm Kara Harris. I live in Whitestone. I'm a lifelong resident. I was born at Tucson Medical Center, and my husband was born at the Copper Queen. We reside in Whitestone. Once again, my theme is choosing to do the right thing. Why? Because choosing to do the right thing is the right thing to do. Every day, we have choices to make, and we're faced with doing the right thing or choosing wrong. I would ask all three of you to do the right thing and help Alfred Kern from Douglas, who drives here every meeting, asking you to fix his robe. What would it hurt any of you to do the right thing and fix his robe? Chairwoman Judd, you were in agreement months ago on the record about following the statutes for precinct voting. You and Mr. Crosby both know it follows the statutes. So why don't you choose to do the right thing? Working together to preserve our election integrity and ensure your grandchildren will grow up in a free county and country. Choose to do the right thing. Get rid of the machines. Don't you realize with Mrs. Mara working for Fontas, she was sent to our conservative county to dismantle our freedoms? One day, paper ballots and no machines are necessary for a free country. It is time for you two to choose to do the right thing and work for the freedoms we all agree with to have a free America. I was at the county fair for four grueling days, but it was heartening to see the amount of 30-plus young people who can see the destruction the Democrat Party has done to their community. They are choosing to align themselves with the conservative movement to protect their young families. Get ready, Cochise County, to see Douglas rock your socks off. They are choosing to do the right thing for their families, that they have watched their city neglected by those who lied to get their votes and are oblivious to the needs of their community. I tell you, this was exhilarating. On a final note, all of you need to realize there were 47 voters who showed up in Thorne's courtroom last week, 47 registered voters who took their own time to drive to Bisbee. On Saturday, an overwhelming group of registered Republicans made a statement to this party saying the same thing, sending a message, we are sick of the same rhetoric. We are not going to take it anymore. And as a side note, Mr. Sturgis, I'm sorry I missed your getting expelled for harassing a vendor at our county fair on Saturday. What a delight that would have been to see. Thank you all. Have a blessed day.
Our next speaker is Carolyn Harris, and she is in person.
Good morning. I'm Carolyn Harris, Bisbee. And first, I want to thank you, Peggy Judd, Tom Crosby, and Inglewood for allowing me to speak. I like the saying, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. Our current election system is safe, lawful, convenient, and economical. It has multiple checks and balances. I recommend at least keeping the 17 voting centers. Voters can vote anywhere they want. 38 more would be a burden on taxpayers. Electronic poll versus paper prevents voter fraud. Early voting is favored by 80% of voters and is protected by Arizona law. Tabulating machines are efficient and accurate. No hand counting. It's more expensive. It's time-consuming. It's inaccurate, and there's also legal concerns. And speaking of taxpayers' money, Crosby has cost half a million in legal fees, and Stevens has cost Cochise County taxpayers a quarter million in taxpayer and legal fees. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Dan LeChance. He is also here in person.
Good morning, supervisor. Thank you for allowing me to speak, Dan LeChance, Sierra Vista. We've heard a lot about not following laws and about, you know, us just being election deniers. So I'll state a few facts. So I want to talk about the jail district first. This is laws. It's not dreamed-up stuff that some of these people that don't have the courage to come in and face people, say, over the telephone. But Arizona Constitution, Article Four, Part One, Section One, Subparagraph Eight, clearly states the power of initiative is reserved to the electors. The electors are the registered voters of Cochise County, not the Board of Supervisors. It's the electors. To begin an initiative requires that 15% of the electors sign petitions stating they want the jail district. 15% of 86,000 is 12,900. The county did not get those 12,900 signatures. They violated the law. Instead, they attempted to avoid circumvent Subparagraph Eight by unlawfully creating a citizens committee of 12 instead of 12,900, who then unlawfully determined a new jail was a necessity, thereby giving the Board of Supervisors the unlawfully attained predicate for moving forward to jail district. That breakage of law automatically disqualifies and deems the jail district null and void. Then they misuse the representation of Subparagraph Eight to then also put forward a further misrepresentation or claim that the constitutional amendment resulting from Prop 132 does not apply to this election, when it is clear the ballot language of Prop 132 established that it does. So directly from the AZ Secretary of State website, the descriptive title of Prop 132, the constitutional amendment would require that an initiative or referendum to approve a tax receives 60% of the votes cast to become law. The language itself, a yes vote shall have the effect of amending the Constitution to require at least 60% of votes cast to approve an initiative or referendum that enacts a tax. Those are clear laws. Those are not guesses. Those are clear laws that were violated by this county. So the county failed to achieve 60%. They failed to get the 12,900. Those are all clear violations of constitutional law that requires that you deem the jail district null and void. Who's to blame for these failures? Is it the Board of Supervisors? Maybe. Ultimately, yes, it is. But who advised them? The county administrator and the county attorney advised them. Had they properly advised the BOS, we would not be involved in bringing a lawsuit against this county fiasco. We've got to get it right. We just have to get this stuff right. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Radford Hyde. He is joining us on Teams. Radford Hyde on Teams.
Hi, good morning, supervisors. Thank you for giving me a moment to speak. My name is Radford Hyde, and I live in Sierra Vista. I'm here to discuss the Cochise County Fair, which I attended Saturday. It was a very fun time, and I must say, the churros at one of the food carts were some of the best I've ever had. I want to thank whoever is responsible for putting on this wholesome family event for the citizens and visitors to the county. I was disheartened to hear about an aggressive fair attendee who caused an incident at one of the vendor booths. This vendor paid good money, I suppose, to have a booth at the fair. In addition to selling patriotic merchandise, they were selling the usual T-shirts and hats critical of the current federal administration, such as Let's Go branded shirts and hats and whatnot, as well as gear supportive of Donald Trump. He also had gear mocking commies and Democrats. Actually, is there much of a difference? Coincidentally, I saw a person nearby talking to the folks at the Democrat Party booth almost immediately before the incident happened. It was, it appeared to be everyone's favorite likely VDS, Crosby Derangement Syndrome, affected sufferer, and many-time Board of Supervisors, call to the public speaker, Mr. Jeff Sturgis. Though I did not witness it, the aggressive person was described by several people the same way. All-white male, perhaps in his 60s, long gray or silver ponytail and matching facial hair, white cowboy hat, white hair, white cowboy hat and white shirt. This exactly matched the person I saw, who I thought was Mr. Jeff Sturgis, who was standing just a few booths down from where the incident happened just a few minutes beforehand. Due to his aggressive behavior and words and causing such a scene with the vendors, this man was kicked out of the county fair. Can you believe it? A man was so aggressive with the vendors, he was kicked out of the county fair. Now, if this is who I think it was, then perhaps their opinions on matters of proper conduct to the Board of Supervisors should be taken with just a tad less seriousness. Thank you again to the security and fair staff who saved the day by protecting the vendor and other fair attendees from this aggressive behavior. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Sandy Troll, and she's here in person.
Hello, Sandy Troll from Sierra Vista. The Arizona Constitution, Article 2, Section 2, Political Power, Purpose of Government, quote, "All political power is inherent in the people, and governments derive their powers from the consent of the governed and are established to protect and maintain individual rights," end quote. Nothing else matters except securing our elections. We have no country without secure legal elections. Don't be distracted. Hand-counted, paper ballots counted at the precinct level by our neighbors, 100% accountability and reconciliation of the ballots. The border situation, the economy, medical freedom, parental rights, and every issue are dependent upon who is in office representing the people. The Board needs to, one, reestablish the 55 precincts that we used to have; two, remove voting technology. Third-party corporations such as ESNS and Runbeck are controlling our elections, not the people. This is unconstitutional. We do not consent to mass mail-in voting with no chain of custody and no voter ID. And I have a quote, "Things are not getting worse. They are getting uncovered. We must hold each other tight and continue to pull back the veil." Thank you. He is also here.
Good morning. My name is Linda Coontz, and I'm a resident of Sierra Vista, Arizona. I came here today, as I've done many times before, to put voice to the will of your constituents, reflecting the critical need to return Cochise County to in-person precinct voting for the sake of election integrity. You've heard at your board meetings, on the street, and in the news that the citizens of our county and others do not trust the methods of either voting by mail, the unreliability and inconvenience of in-person voting centers, or the counting of votes by machines proven to be subject to interference in past elections. It has been argued that costs must be considered as the primary reason of maintaining this flawed system. But when subjects titled Jail District and others come before this board, it's consistently stated that the need must be addressed over the costs, even to the extent that costs exceed new jail construction by unexplainable dollar volume. The need of election integrity is critical. The cost to maintain that integrity is justified. In past issues where citizens, including myself, have come to express our concerns in an open meeting, it's often been the result that a two-to-one vote of your board has initially supported the voter's will, and then we've left the room following this regular meeting, confident that you've heard us, only to find out later that day or a couple of days later that you Supervisor Judd had changed your mind and voted with the dissenter in opposition to U.S. state constitutions and the will of the people. Ms. Judd, it's time to be the leader that you can be and not the follower. The citizens of this county now demand that you uphold your constitutional duty and the oath of your office with finality, and use your vote to continually ensure the rights and the will of voters that put you in office to begin with. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Paul R. Varble.
Good morning, everybody. My name's Paul R. Varble, Sierra Vista. To error is only human. To royally screw things up and create voter fraud just takes a computer. Remember that. Computers take commands. They do what human input directs them to do. You do know what computers are, right? I know you do. They are machines, which are fallible, and we don't want machines in our elections. Machines are directly part of the fraud known as election interference. And those who do not believe in election interference and want the machines are complicit in fraud. You know what complicity is, right? And committing fraud, you elect corrupt or treasonous actors. And the result is open borders and the invasion of our country. These invaders are not migrants who are seasonal farm workers, and they go back to Mexico. They are not asylum seekers, for they seek asylum in the first country they enter when leaving their hellhole. And by the way, they can't do it from Mexico. So when they're coming in in camouflage, they knew they were going to come in illegally from every part of the world. And when they come in groups, it's called an invasion. And an invasion is an act of war. So you people on this board need to prove that you believe in election integrity or be removed for your complicity in election interference and fraud and treason because of this war that's coming to our country, because of fraud and your refusal to do anything about it. It only takes one act of fraud to videate the outcome of any action, including elections. And why are we the people still fighting for election integrity? Because there were 240,000 acts of fraud in 2020 and at Maricopa County. And we, the people, are taking our country back. And as you've noticed with recent events, we forced the resignation of several individuals because of no election integrity, and they believed in the machines. We want proof of American citizenship, voter IDs with pictures. One day, one vote, no mail-in ballots and no machines. And I have a solution. Round up all these illegals. Put them all onto the planes. Send them to the Ukraine, who can financially house and feed them with our billions of taxpayers' money. And if you have concerns about Ukraine's army, send all the fighting-age males to fill the vacancies. And as for Tom and David, they are the only ones that are fighting and defending our Constitution. I want you guys to know that. And Jeff Sturgis, I know you're hearing me. You're a fruitcake, buddy. Thank you. Have a good day.
The next speaker is Robert McCormick.
Thank you. I'm Robert McCormick from Sierra Vista, Arizona. Election infrastructure. Two of you seem to have forgotten the reason you were elected to be the Board of Supervisors, so I'd like to remind you now. Your prime directive is to protect our national rights given to us, not by government, but by God. Supervise the county government in the furtherance of protecting our rights as the sovereigns of our county. Supervisor Judd, lately you have given us many reasons to lose faith in you as an elected representative of the people, but there is a glimmer of hope. Last regular meeting, when you voted no to put into place the same failed election infrastructure of 2018, 2019, 2022. The Board acted unlawfully when you implemented voting centers and election machines without having gained our approval through the initiative process to make changes to the way we vote. This Board again acted unlawfully when you imposed mail-in voting, which has violated our U.S. and Arizona constitutional rights. We pointed all of this out clearly in our presentation of 23 February 2023. Supervisor Judd, Supervisor Crosby, and English, restore our elections to what they were before they were unlawfully changed. Do it now. Do it in time for the 2024 primary election. Get in an elections director who will do the work to restore the election system to one which is 100% verifiable and certifiable. One day, a precinct voting on paper counted by electors, verified by the county, with very limited mail-in voting, which achieves the same chain of custody and identity verification as to obtained with the walk-in vote. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Rebecca Allen Jones.
Supervisors, as you know, I'm Rebecca Allen Jones. On behalf of Miracle Valley Oasis Center, thank you for all the time that you have committed to fulfill your duties of care for the future of the historic Miracle Valley Bible College property. Now is a critical moment for just a bit more action. This past Friday, the 22nd, you concluded the tax-deed land sale, which began on the 11th. The sale has a required public notice period of no less than two weeks. The notice was given August 30th, just 12 days prior to the sale. While this was likely simply an oversight by your hard-working staff, it does invalidate the sale. While the auction was underway, sadly, strong evidence of impropriety and behind-the-scenes stealings came to light. This evidence is something we'll be providing to you in the next few days. The auction clearly stated that the Board of Supervisors reserves the right to withdraw the unit or bid from an auction. You have the authority. I have provided you with a petition like this stack here, signed by hundreds of your concerned citizens over the weekend who want their voices heard. You continue to receive more via email. We collectively are asking you to use your authority for good and do what must be done. Withdraw the property from the auction, which was started with inadequate notice, and investigate the bid history of this auction. This property matters too much to this community to stand by and not listen to your constituents at this time. Keep in mind that the statutes governing the sale of this property require that any funds made at sale first go to pay off back taxes. Once this is fulfilled, all remaining funds go directly to the party who had the property taken from them. Unfortunately, Dan Coxworth was misinformed, telling you that the sale can be a big financial win for the county. Even the asbestos abatement cannot come out of the sale. He's told you this would be paid for out of the sale proceeds, but the brownfield grants must and should be responsible for those expenses. The property was determined by SHPO to be eligible for listing as a historic district in the National Register of Historic Places. This means this property is special, needs unique care. You're not required to be preservationist, but according to ARS 41862, you are required to balance the auction with not inadvertently selling to any property who would not be able to prove their commitment and ability to preserve it. Please do the right thing once more. Take the impropriety seriously and withdraw this unit from the invalid sale. Start fresh. This property will not be preserved if you stand by it. All of us have to do our part. It's the only, one of the only standing historic properties in the country linked to Christian history and the civil rights movement. Your vision to preserve the cultural heritage, this is that moment now where you can work together to make it a reality. Thank you.
Our next speaker in person, Jean Guifrida.
Good morning. Thank you. I'm Jean Guifrida from Herbert. So at the last Board of Supervisors meeting, the now former election director, Bob Bartelsmeyer, stated his concerns about disenfranchising voters if significant changes were made to the election procedures as one of the reasons to continue with the voting centers. Did anyone take that into consideration, the possibility of disenfranchising voters, when you came up with the jail bond sales tax, all mail-in ballot election? It's so rich that this was now a concern over a year out from the 2024 presidential election, while all mail-in elections was approved just months before that off-year special election held in a non-traditional timeframe and resulting in real disenfranchisement of 12,000 voters. But that point seems to be falling on deaf ears. Chairman Judd, last time I spoke to you, I said I asked, "Please do better," and you did. Thank you so much for the great start in bringing back our election integrity to Cochise County by bringing back precinct polling places. That was terrific. Thank you so much. So now let's continue that mission as you have promised us in the past several times with eliminating electronic voting machines, tabulators, no mail-in ballots, of course, except for our military and infirmed, eliminating all mail-in ballot elections in the future, paper ballots, one-day voting. Make it a holiday. You'll be a hero. Everybody will love you. And let's make voting great again. On another note, I was so truly disappointed with our elected officials' press conference of two weeks ago in response to the illegal aliens being dropped off in the Bisbee Safeway parking lot. I was absolutely astonished to hear that I, a tax-paying citizen of Cochise County, had no rights, but the illegal aliens, to quote, "had a lawful right to be there." A lawful right? An alien illegally here had a lawful right over me, a tax-paying citizen, and 125,000 other tax-paying citizens of Cochise County? That's appalling. The people that voted for you, you're supposed to protect us. We pay for your salaries. We voted for you. Do the right thing. How humane is it to drop people off with no resources at all? What will your actions cause next? Oh, and by the way, I was not paid to be here today.
Our next speaker is Tamara Birch.
Good morning, Board members and all the citizens listening and in the audience. My name is Tamara Birch and live in Bisbee, Arizona. Thank you for allowing me to have my voice heard and my concerns and observations. My focus today is about our sacred right to vote. Your participation and research must display the highest regard for administering the laws, statutes, procedures that produce the most efficient voting methods, ensuring bipartisanship and financial responsibilities. Your actions must reflect the needs of our 77,000 voters. While I appreciate the fact-based presentation of Bob Bartelsmeyer on the cost and effectiveness of the 17 vote centers on 9/12/23, I was dismayed at the vote. Ignoring legal counsel advice, Ms. Judd was told that the voting for the 17 vote centers would not negate her ability to add other vote centers in her district. As stated last week, the 55 precincts are not time nor cost-efficient. They do not accommodate for working or traveling voters to vote anywhere within the county. The security of our voting process and machines, the age of the poll workers, the long hours spent, the transporting of equipment would be burdensome, to say the least, and cause more provincial votes. I would like clarity on the 55 precincts. Are they going to happen or not? I believe we should stick with the 17 vote centers and then add more as needed. We must have certified, qualified, and bipartisan employees involved in our election process. We know that 80% of the votes are early mail-in ballots. Dave Stevens, when I asked him, he said that there was only nine incidents of fraud. We know our voting machines are secure enough and reliable. I'm disheartened that our elections director is leaving us in the lurch, especially after unprecedented moving costs and salary. The hiring process must be impartial, with background checks required, qualifications and experience, and job performance being documented, or thus not go backwards. Board of Supervisors, please vote in a way that does not continue the frivolous costly lawsuits and ignore, do not ignore the attorney's advice and counsel and state laws. Do not waste our valuable time and money. Adapt to the 21st century, our needs and technology. Educate yourself, all voters, on who is qualified, not by your party affiliation. And Mr. Numbok, go back and listen to the And Mr. Numbok, go back and listen to the last meeting and the cost effectiveness, please. Thank you.
Our final speaker is Kato Daley, also in person.
Thank you, Kato Daley, Bisbee. To those who think that our county election system is broken, does that mean that you are questioning the validity of our elected officials here? Just, just a thought. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Supervisor Judd and Crosby, you have been manipulated and duped by county recorder David Stevens. You have wasted tens of thousands of our hard-earned tax dollars and have caused instability in what was a well-run, competent, and respected county elections department. As our representatives, we voters and taxpayers depend on you, our county supervisors, to make informed, responsible decisions for us. In the elections department, you have sadly failed. Not only have you wasted our money to be spent on lawyers and on hiring an unqualified elections director, but you've also harassed and caused competent and dedicated election officials to quit. You, Peggy Judd, and Tom Crosby are responsible. You consistently support our incompetent county recorder David Stevens in poor election decisions, the most recent being the hiring of an equally incompetent and now outgoing elections director, Bob Bartelsmeyer. Supervisor English has opposed many of these actions, and she opposed his appointment, and I thank you for that. On county recorder, then also overseer of the county elections department, David Stevens' recommendation, Judd and Crosby agreed to pay Bartelsmeyer $10,000 for moving costs and agreed to pay his salary at higher than the advertised salary. This man did not even meet the minimized advertised requirements for the election director's job. And now, four months into the job, he quits. You, Crosby, and Judd are responsible. You supported Stevens' recommendation. I remember that April 25th meeting, their supervisor, English questioned Stevens about Bartelsmeyer's lack of qualifications. She pointed out his spotty employment record. There was a 12-year gap in his recent employment history, and he said the county could not contact recent employers. She asked Stevens if any of that raised a red flag for him, and he arrogantly responded no and casually leaned on the podium, challenging Supervisor English if she had any other questions. Supervisor Judd and Crosby, you fell for Stevens' dupe, and now we pay again for another huge biasco caused by you. Pay attention who is dedicated, physically responsible, and as a civil servant wants to represent you. Enough is enough. This has to stop. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move to consent agenda. I just wanted to-
I'd like to respond to some of myself. And I'm just going to mention Ms. Daley because she was the last one, and I wrote down her, her name here. And I would remind you that this is not a dialogue, so if you want to reply back to what I say now, you have to wait till you get another three minutes. Okay, so back in November 21st, '22, I wrote a letter to then Secretary of State, Secretary of State Katie Hobbs, and I said, "reference court cases at present. My observation is that it is either effectively illegal or otherwise impossible to confirm the 100% accuracy of our voting machines." And I had a group that I called Paul Rice et al., including Mr. LaChance, and the presenters indicate confidence that your office, the Secretary of State, cannot produce several examples of documented proof that I will note, nor has your office responded thus far to the public records requests also pertinent to the accreditation issue at hand. So with the issue of disenfranchisement, it has to do with the accreditation of the laboratories that certify voting machines. So I am talking about engineering change orders, which is a subject brought up by Mr. Paul Rice. And he said to the Secretary of State, "I would like to respectfully request the certificates referenced in the Secretary of State documented in number two above to be provided to me issued at this time."
You have the right to respond if someone is trying to defame you on the call to the public, but not on knowledge-
I'm going to continue. Thank you.
I don't think Ms. Kato addressed those machines.
Well, there were several people that talked about various issues of being disenfranchised, so I'm going to talk about disenfranchisement comes from the machines not being certificated. Why, you are interrupting me, and I don't want to be interrupted. It has to do with disenfranchisement has to do with the accreditation of the laboratories certifying election machines. I don't want to be interrupted. I have the floor. Furthermore, these, these questions that Mr. Rice brought up are now a year old, and there's been no response from the Secretary of State's office. Okay, I am continuing. Judge Napper in Yavapai says, "The most recent ballot envelope signatures cannot be confirmed by the previous ballot envelope signatures." So these are not frivolous lawsuits. These are lawsuits that are going forward. Thank you.
Now we're ready for consent agenda items 1 through 4.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve agenda items 1 through 4.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 The chair votes aye and the motion carries unanimously. We are going to have a public hearing now for item number five. If you could make the motion, and then I'll open the public hearing.
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt zoning ordinance 2318 to rezone 106-15-091D from R36 residential 1 dwelling per 36,000 square feet to RU4 rural 1 dwelling per 4 acres pursuant to the application of Renee Farkas.
Second.
Okay, and I'm going to open the public hearing, and first we'll hear from Mr. Dan Coxworth, our Development Services Director.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, Board members. The applicant, Renee Farkas, is requesting a downzoning from R36 to RU4. The Board of Supervisors rezoned the property in 2006 with the condition that the applicant file a subdivision plat within 18 months. The Babo Kamari area has not developed as anticipated, and to remove this condition, the applicant must revert the zoning back to RU4. The property is located in the Babo Kamari area on the northwest corner of Ronald Reagan and Zosimo. It does meet the minimum zoning requirements of 4 acres. It's currently vacant, and the proposed use for the property is single-family residence. The county did mail notices to surrounding property owners within 300 feet, posted the property, and published a legal notice in the paper. The department has received no responses. This request does comply with 11 of the applicable rezoning factors. And as I mentioned, there are no factors against. We have received no responses to our notification. Drone footage, or drone picture of the property looking to the north and northwest. Staff does recommend approval of this rezoning, and the Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously to recommend for the Board of Supervisors approval. And that's all I have.
So this is a public hearing. Are there any members of the public that would like to comment on this property? Rezoning of this property? I don't hear any, but at this time I'll call for the board to have, if they have any questions or comments.
I think there's some simply following through with what was told to the owner of that property. And at one time, they thought that Babo Kamari was going to explode and develop, and it did not. And so now we're following the rules and putting it back into the the type of zoning that it was to begin with in a rural area, and that's RU4. So I think it's just responsible on our part to follow through on this, is what we promised.
Thank you. And I, I also think that this is going to improve the, the continuity of this area because the area, having lost their public road district and some other things, is just not, not conducive to further development. And so this is a good start for us to start to look at how we treat those properties and those property owners. And it's good that she brought this forward.
Thank you.
And thank you for your work on it. Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. Hearing, no, do you have anything? No more comment. I'm closing the public hearing. If we could, are we ready to vote? Any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye and the motion carries unanimously. Our next action, now we're on to action items. Adult probation, item number six. We have a motion. We have a motion for item number six.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the Drug, Gang, and Violent Crime Control Program Funding Agreement as provided by the Arizona Supreme Court Administrative Office of the Courts in the amount of $75,428.48 and the required $25,142.83 matching funds effective July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2024.
Second.
Thank you. Rita Shipley, the Budget Finance Director, please.
Thank you. Good morning. Good morning, Madam Chair and Supervisors English and Crosby. Adult probation is requesting that the Board approve the fiscal year 24 Drug, Gang, Violent Crime Control Program Grant provided by the Administrative Office of the Courts. This grant provides wages and employee-related expenses for two pre-sentence report writers at 36% each and two pre-trial officers at 29% each, for a total of 1.3 FTEs. These positions are currently filled, and the remaining expenses are paid from general fund. The pre-sentence report provides a thorough overview of the client's offense and their risk needs in the community. The report also makes a recommendation to the judge on the right level of supervision to increase the client's chance of success on probation and lower the risk of recidivism. The pre-trial services program provides the opportunity for identified clients to be released from custody and supervised under general terms and conditions similar to probation. The pre-trial officers assist clients in making positive behavioral changes prior to their court dates. I'd be happy to answer any questions about this grant at this time.
I have no questions. Thank you.
And I just said there's three employees that are covered by this?
There's actually four. We have two probation officers who are the pre-sentence writers and two surveillance officers who are out in the field.
I was making a note, and I didn't get the other one, but that's a very effective cost for those, that number of employees, I just wanted to say. But thank you for-
25%.
Yeah. Oh, 25% of the cost. Okay. All right. Well, thank you, and I don't hear any other comments. So thank you, Ms. Shipley, and I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye and the motion carries unanimously. Thank you. The next is County Sheriff, item number seven.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, we didn't hear a supervisor for us be spoke.
Oh, I was just very quiet. Aye.
Okay, it did vote unanimously. Thank you. Item number seven.
Madam Chair, I move we approve intergovernmental agreement, IGA, between Cochise County and City of Bisbee, Arizona, for the Cochise County Sheriff's Office to provide special weapons and tactics-related training to the city law enforcement, fire department, and emergency medical services, as well as mutual aid assistance with an initial term of five years effective September 26, 2023.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, Mr. Curtis Wilkins, here you are.
Members of the board, what this is, is a concept that's been around for a while, regional SWAT team. And now we actually have a lot of traction with the local agencies who want to join. We've had four agencies that want to join up. Four came out the test, one got through. What this will allow us to do is to expand the SWAT team. We currently sit at about 16 members. We actually want to double that to meet a tier-one team level. We should be able to get there, I think, with interest starting to show up. We've got talks with service, the PD, and also with Doug's. With all that input, I think we can grow the team. We can start doing a better job. We can take that training to the rest of the county so that these guys can operate safer and can resolve a lot of these bad situations in a lot safer manner for all the people involved. Any questions?
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Are we going to provide weapons training to fire department and emergency medical services personnel?
So with some of those folks, right now we currently have medics from Fire Department. They are allowed to carry handgun if they go through training and they pass an easy post qual, just like any other officer does. They do not have to carry one. If they want to, they can, because they will be in those situations treating folks possibly under fire or under arrest. It's an opportunity for them to protect themselves, but they have to pass the same qual that we do. If they don't, they cannot carry.
Okay, I thought I remembered that from a previous similar item. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Having known of particular incidents in Wilcox where it was a SWAT team-type incident, and it, it takes a while for the sheriff's department to get there, and I really appreciate that you're combining. And it was a combined effort that day in Wilcox. But to have everybody trained and everybody trained together and supported, it seems like a great idea. Thank you.
I think it'd be amazing.
Hey, are there any other questions or comments for this item?
Good training is always something we should be involved in.
Yep. And hearing no others, I will call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye and the motion carries unanimously. And you're still there because we have another item.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve intergovernmental agreement between Cochise County and the City of Benson, Arizona, for the Cochise County Sheriff's Office to provide special weapons and tactic training, related training to the city law enforcement, fire department, and emergency medical services, as well as mutual aid assistance with an initial term of five years effective September 26, 2023.
Second.
Okay, Lieutenant Wilkins, do you have any other comments?
Everything I said before.
Okay, and I do have another question. Are there other cities? You said there's more people looking to, to join in and-
Yes, ma'am. So we had Benson, Wilcox, and Bisbee that interested and participated. One got through, and then just met with service to PD probably three weeks ago, and they are very excited about it. And you're actually starting to train with their team and our team together to the integration part, because they have their own team. It's hard to do, so we have to make sure that we're all on the same page, and we're starting to train together now.
Very good. Thank you. Is there any other comments from the board? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 The chair votes aye and the motion carries unanimously. Okay, now we're back to the courts, court administration, item number nine.
Madam Chair, I move we approve funding agreement between Cochise County Superior Court and the Arizona Supreme Court Administrative Office of the Courts, AOC, provided by the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, for reduction of case backlogs. ARPA 2 court technology clerk assistant in the amount of $135,800 effective March 1st, 2023 through December 31st, 2026.
I second the motion.
Okay, so Ms. Shipley, we have you back.
Yes, good morning again. Court Administration is requesting that the Board approve the multi-year court technology funding agreement. This funding agreement provides wages and employee-related expenses for court technology clerk-assistant position. We have a judicial IT customer service assistant position, which is currently filled, that meets the criteria for this funding. The IT assistant handles the complex equipment and software systems in the courtroom needed to run remote and high-bread meetings, also to make a proper record of the proceedings and to facilitate the use of digital evidence. I'd be happy to answer any questions the Board has at this time, and our judicial IT manager, Candace Hart, can address any questions that you have on the courtroom technology.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Can you tell us about the backlogs? What, what kind of shape are we in as far as backlogs?
Yeah, at the, at our last meeting, when I was here, I sent over the number of cases. So right now, as of the beginning of September, we were at 111 cases that were backlogged. And the Supreme Court, with the ARPA funds, they have been providing a lot of funding to assist the courts catch up from, you know, the time that we were down during COVID and really delayed hearings on there. So now we, they're dedicating the resources and personnel to get us to getting caught up on those cases and increasing our capacity.
Can you translate 111 cases into time in months?
No.
Okay.
I don't.
That's fine.
This may or may not pertain to our vote, but I was wondering what, what it looks like whenever 111 cases are backlogged. What are the, what are the citizens doing? What, you know, the person who has been tried and is going through the process? What's happening with that person?
The backlog cases, the definition is based on the days to deposition, to deposing that, which is 365 days. So if it takes longer than that, that's technically considered a backlog. They're just proceeding through. What they're trying to do now is do settlement conferences. That, our previous grant that we got was to get the senior commissioners, which are retired Superior Court judges, to come back, and we have them hearing cases and trying to reach plea agreements and coming up with a settlement to avoid going to a costly trial.
So they're just waiting their day in court, because that's the scheme. So they're just waiting their day in court, as asking what the common citizen is doing who's been tried or who's been found guilty of something, or not found guilty yet. They're just waiting.
Yes.
Waiting and waiting and waiting. Okay. So that's expensive to us, if they're incarcerated or otherwise. Thank you. Just curious about that. All right. Is there any other thoughts or comments? Okay, now hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 The Chair votes aye, and the motion carries unanimously. Okay, thank you. Item number ten, Development Services. Need a motion?
Madam Chair, I move we adopt Resolution twenty-three dash twenty-five to designate Alphrida, Arizona as a colonia consistent with the objective criteria listed in the Cranston-Gonzalez National Affordable Housing Act of nineteen ninety, effective on September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three.
I second the motion.
We have most of the second. Ms. Susan Brunson, thank you for being here.
Good morning. Thank you. We're asking that Alphrida be designated as a colonia as recognized by the USDA. This will allow them to apply for funding from the USDA that they're not able to apply for if they're not so designated. As a bit of history, the Cranston-Gonzalez, excuse me, National Affordable Housing Act established a process for designating a community as a colonia. And there are four criteria that must be met in order for this to occur. The first criteria is that the area is an identifiable community located within one hundred and fifty miles of the US-Mexico border. Alphrida is twenty-eight miles from the border. The next criteria is that the county or state in which the community is located can designate the community as a colonia, and Cochise County, of course, is able to designate Alphrida as a colonia. The next criteria is that the area lacks an adequate water supply or sewer system or lacks affordable housing. The Alphrida Water District sent us information establishing that it lacks adequate water systems. And lastly, the criteria is that the community existed and can be generally recognized as a colonia before nineteen ninety. Alphrida's history goes back to the eighteen hundreds. In eighteen seventy-nine, it was established as Camp Rucker. May I answer any of your questions?
I have no questions. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
And I'm very familiar with Camp Rucker, having done an archaeological project at Camp Rucker, and it is actually up in the mountains in Rucker Canyon. So I was thrown by that. But yes, definitely established far before nineteen ninety. I have relatives. My son lives there and is in a fifth-generation home. So they've been there since way before nineteen ninety. But just so you know, look up Camp Rucker. It's a fascinating place. You can visit. There's interpretive stuff. That just threw me a little bit, but you know, sometimes you know, and sometimes you don't, but now you do. Okay, well, I am excited about this colonia designation, having worked closely with other districts and communities trying to put something in action or get something repaired or whatever. And we have a lot of very old, very established communities that are struggling in our county. So this was exciting, but yet I know we have to proceed with caution and carefully and legally. But thank you for bringing this to us. Thank you, Mr. Coxworth, too, for bringing this. Really appreciate it.
I think that many areas in the county, at one point in time, were looked at to be colonias. But for lack of a reason to move forward, USDA dropped them from the list. And so I think it's important, since it can be designated as a colonia, that we do that, because it does open up the money train from USDA in order to be able to fix some of these problems, such as water lines that have existed for so many years that they may be galvanized pipe and not really usable in today and breaking all the time. So, yeah, they were looking for a way to help out the community, and I think this is one that might give them a big boost.
I agree. Well, thank you. Is there any comments, Mr. Cosby?
No, thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the floor, and hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
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 The Chair votes aye, and the motion carries unanimously. Okay, the next item is number eleven.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the Cooperative Agreement four B dash nine eight T seven zero eight zero one dash zero with the Environmental Protection Agency, or EPA, to establish a revolving loan fund in Cochise County to remediate brownfield sites in the amount of one million dollars.
Second.
Effective October first, twenty twenty-three to October thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven.
I'm sorry, second.
Okay, motion and a second on the floor, Mr. Coxworth, Development Services Director.
Good morning again, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Staff is requesting that the Board approve a one-million-dollar grant from the EPA to establish a revolving loan fund and grants to assist property owners in the county in cleaning up brownfield sites. Brownfields are properties that may be contaminated with hazardous substances, materials, petroleum, or other contaminants. Typically, this is asbestos, lead-based paint, or ground contamination from fuel tanks. In my presentation today, I will talk about the grants we've received to date from the EPA, some of the benefits of the RLF fund, and then how we are looking to manage the program. Also, along the way, I will show some success stories of how the assessment funds have been used and the properties that could benefit from the RLF. The county has a very good relationship with the EPA, and we have been successful in our efforts to obtain funding from the EPA for brownfields in the county. In twenty nineteen, we applied for and received six hundred thousand dollars for assessment grants. This money has been expended, and this grant is closed. We applied again and received another five hundred thousand dollars in twenty twenty-two. We are currently, we continue to receive nominations for properties and continue to deploy this money out into the community, performing assessments of properties to include reuse plans and area-wide plans. These assessments were instrumental in encouraging redevelopment and attracting investment in the county. The county applied for and is one of thirty-seven grantees in the country to be awarded an RLF grant. The one-million-dollar grant is a natural progression or the next step of addressing brownfields in the county. The first two grants we use for assessment, but they can't be used for cleanup, and now the RLF grant loan fund can be used for the cleanup of properties. In the past, we considered applying for RLF funds, but the match was twenty percent. For this grant, there is no match requirement. This is the old Bisbee High School. We use assessment grant funds to assess us prior to the county selling this property. That was very helpful for the new owners of the property, and if they received the bank loan, the Bisbee High School would be eligible if the project owner is interested in applying for a grant to clean up some of the asbestos and lead-based paint in that property. This is a redevelopment property that is going to be turned into market-rate apartments there in old Bisbee. The RLF grant is particularly timely for Cochise County, given we are a county, a rural county with inherent challenges of securing loans from conventional banks for small-scale projects, especially in the face of current rising interest rates. Given the substantial progress made with property assessments, there is an increasing need for additional resources. These resources are crucial to aid property owners in the cleanup process as they progress in their redevelopment efforts. And then just some of the highlights of how the, on the screen, of how the RLF will benefit the county. This picture is the Hillcrest Apartments. With our assessment grant, we did a an assessment of the property for hazardous materials. We also provided a reuse plan for the City of Bisbee. These documents were helpful for the City of Bisbee to secure their own funding in cleaning up the hazardous materials in hopes of redeveloping the site for low-to-moder income houses. If the Board of Supervisors approves the grant, staff will move forward with a procurement process to contract with a community development financed institution, which is also known as a CDFI. A CDFI will work, often will work with local banks to determine loan eligibility and help manage the loans. Fifty percent of the one million dollars may be used for low-interest loans. The other fifty percent may be used for grants to government organizations or other nonprofits. In coordination with the CDFI, the county will set the loan terms. This is a picture of the Chevy building in Wilcox. It's at the entryway to their downtown. We did an assessment of that. That property is currently being redeveloped into a wine tasting room and wine sales. I have a couple more pictures of projects we use assessment money for that are eligible for the RLF funds. This was owned by the City of Douglas and has since been sold for redevelopment. The new owner of this property would be eligible to apply for RLF funds. And the last example I have here is the Bowie High School. There's asbestos in the school. The state had concerns with the asbestos, that there wasn't a material survey or a containment plan. Our assessment grant was used to develop those documents for the state in order to keep the school open. Bowie as a school district would be eligible for a grant to actually now clean up that asbestos in the high school. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Mr. Coxworth, who would administrate such low-interest loans that you mentioned that would come from this grant?
We are looking to contract with a community development finance institution in order to help us administrate the loans, manage the loans. Obviously, we're not a bank. We're not experienced at doing this. Potentially, we have the capacity to do this. Other government organizations have done this. But considering our current capacity, I think it's in our best interest to go through a procurement process to hire a CDFI. I've talked with the City of Tucson, the City of Phoenix. They both have these programs and continue to coordinate with them and how they're going about managing their RLF grant funds. And it seems like the best course of action for Cochise County would be to contract with the CDFI.
Thank you.
Do you think that would be cheaper or comparative to a local bank? Because you did mention local banks.
You know, often they work with local banks, and I hope in this case they do work with some local banks or credit unions. Here in the county, there's no guarantee of that. But at least having a local bank, understanding the local community, and then some benefit to a local bank here in Cochise County as well.
So how readily available are the CDFIs?
There's a couple of them out there. City of Tucson did struggle through their procurement process. They did procure one that they're currently in contract with. I don't have a lot of information about that. City of Phoenix did procure a contract with the largest CDFI and is used to managing these types of RLF grants from the EPA.
And they're local. Local meaning in the state of Arizona?
The one that City of Phoenix contracted with, I don't know if they're local or not. But the one out of Phoenix is a national company. So, and keep in mind, this is a relatively small amount of money. It does have to be somewhat worth their while, so.
Yeah, that's why I was thinking, if the procurement process also reaches out to local banks or banks are able to become part, because you would think, you know, there's national banks as well in Sierra Vista. You know, it might be beneficial that we don't, with this small amount of money, don't go to the CDFI level.
Yeah.
So.
That, you know, and I agree, I prefer to really work with a local bank to help us with this. I think their fees would be lower. We can then deploy more money out into the community. It's always possible that we pivot from this strategy of a CDFI to do things in-house. That's very, that is possible as well. Obviously, coordination with our, coordination comfort level with our county finance department.
I guess. Are there any other questions or discussion? Thank you, Mr. Coxworth. I will call for the vote on item number eleven. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The Chair votes aye, and the motion carries unanimously. Our next is Engineering and Natural Resources, if we can have a motion.
Madam Chair, I move we approve Amendment number three to intergovernmental agreement eleven dash one-two-one dash aye with the State of Arizona Department of Transportation, ADOT, to revise project costs to include additional project development administration, PDA, costs detailed in Exhibit Eight for Davis Road improvements from Central Highway to US one ninety-one in the amount of thirty thousand dollars.
I second the motion.
Okay, and we have Jackie Watkins, our Director of Engineering and Natural Resources. And it's been a while since we've seen you up here.
Madam Chair and the Board.
Thank you.
This is one of the projects on Davis Road from Central to one ninety-one. We're in the process now of obtaining right-of-way, and we've obtained six parcels out of the eleven. And this is to take the plans that we have at ninety-five percent up to one hundred percent. And so this is to pay the cost to ADOT, the thirty thousand for the project administration costs that they have. And then we will also then go out to hire a consultant to take the ninety-five percent plans to one hundred percent. And that anticipated cost is seventy thousand, and we will do the contract for that design cost. We won't design it in-house, but we'll get the consultant to finish the plans. So this is just to get the ADOT to get us the environmental clearance, to update our environmental clearance and all of our clearances that we have on the project. And this project started in twenty-eleven.
Certainly, a long time.
The Davis Road Corridor Study started in two thousand and six.
Well, this is an example of the government wheels are going very, very, very slowly.
Well, it's a cost, although we have to wait for grants.
Yeah, but thank you very much for your work on it and your presentation. Are there any questions? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The Chair votes aye, and the motion carries unanimously. Item number thirteen.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the intergovernmental agreement twenty-three dash zero 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 nine two seven one dash one between the State of Arizona Department of Transportation and Cochise County for Mosen Road Drainage and Safety Improvement between State Route Ninety and Hurford Road in the amount of six million, one hundred thousand dollars, effective upon signing by all parties.
Second.
A motion and a second. Ms. Watkins.
This is six point one million dollars for, if we need extra funds for the design and then to construct one phase of Mosen Road. Mosen Road, we did an assessment last year, and to do the design, the assessment is twenty-one million. We have one million dollars of funds from the Service to NPO for construction or for design, and that is with ADOT overseeing, and that could be higher than one million to get that designed. So we can use these funds for design and construction of a phase that we will get clarified when we get the design done. And so these are state funds from the state legislature, and so they will be depositing the six point one million in a fund account for the county that we then will use for construction once we get the design done. Yes.
Ms. Watkins, when do you think the improvements on Mosen Road will be completely done?
We won't even start designing until January, because it's going through ADOT. So they're going to get a consultant on design, so the design will take a year. So at the end of twenty twenty-four, we should have the design completed, and then we will start one phase of it. It's probably ten years before the complete road is widened.
Okay, so in the meantime, we will continue to mow and spray and do everything that needs to be done, as it is now.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Right, well, thank you.
At least there's money there now. We've been looking for that for a long time.
Madam Chair, if I may.
Yes.
Just to clarify as to the motion, it is twenty-three dash zero 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 nine two seven one dash aye.
Dash aye, okay.
That's not a one.
Yeah, not a one. I just clarified.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we'll correct that on the motion. All right, all those, if hearing no more comments, all those in favor say aye.
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 The Chair votes aye, and the motion carries unanimously. Our last item for the day, item number fourteen, if we could have a motion on that.
Madam Chair, I move we approve Amendment Three to intergovernmental agreement CTR zero five five two five six between Arizona Department of Health Services and Cochise County Health and Social Services for title between Arizona Department of Health Services and Cochise County Health and Social Services for Title V maternal and child care health healthy, did I get mixed up there? Title V maternal and child care, child health, healthy Arizona families in the amount of one hundred and sixty-six thousand one hundred and seventy-six dollars affected July first, twenty twenty-three to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. I hope I got that out right.
I'll second that. My 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 motion.
And we have Belinda Gonzalez, she's public health nurse in our county.
My name is Belinda. I'm a public health nurse and I'm the program coordinator for the maternal child health program. And I'm here to ask that you approve year four of this five-year grant between ADHS and Cochise County, which will allow us to continue to support well-woman visits, breastfeeding, and physical activity in Cochise County.
Have any questions?
I think that we have, um, in case we haven't let the public know, I think we have in the past, but these are award-winning programs. And so we do a good job of this. So apparently, we're, um, we're making significant changes in the families that we do visit and take care of and hopefully get those children off to a good start. So thank you for what you do.
Okay. So piqued my interest, the the physical activity that you just said. I know what the first two are. Um, what is physical activity?
Uh, we recently started providing, uh, free sports physicals in rural areas. So we'll go out to areas like Elfrida and McNeil um, and work with the school nurses to get, um, sports physicals so that kids can play, um, um, sports during.
So just that, yeah, I don't, I knew that. So that's how you encourage physical activity and health by letting the kids have a free sports physical. Okay, very good. Are there any other comments or questions? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 The chair votes aye and the motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you for everyone that participated today. Um, our next item up for business is a report by Richard Karwatska, our county administrator.
So I'll be somewhat brief. This past weekend, we had the Cochise County Fair, and I wanted to agree with one of the comments about the churros. They were delicious, uh, better than I've ever had. Uh, but I also wanted to just put out there to everyone listening that this time of year in Cochise County, we have a lot of festivals on every weekend and to explore the internet or visit Cochise, uh, so we can get visitors outside of our county and even our residents to come in here and spend some money. So that will conclude my presentation.
Thank you.
District one, I think we have the Hispanic Festival as I'm, as if I'm not mistaken, in the park this coming weekend. So hopefully I will make it to that. Uh, Mr. Coxworth didn't stay for more exciting agenda items, but I wanted to commend Mr. Coxworth for his patience regarding the citizens' concerns about Miracle Valley. Valley, thank you, Mr. Coxworth.
And district two.
Well, of course, that's the resident of the county fair, so we had lots of migrants from other parts of the county participating, and the weather was very great. But I also wanted to give a shout out and a thank you to, um, to Dan and Sharon, uh, who've been kind of shepherding a new sign at BDI for seems like years. It's probably only been a year, but it seems like three. And so if you pass by the BDI, you'll notice that we have an updated new sign at the entrance to the Bisbee Douglas International Airport.
Great. Well, thank you. And, um, speaking of festivals, Rex Allen Days, which is the most important festival in Wilcox. There are a lot. We've reinvented ourselves and have wine festivals and things. But Rex Allen Days is our historically significant, um, sixty-six years, I believe now, we've been celebrating that our hometown hero Rex Allen. And if you don't know who he is because you're too young, or maybe you didn't recognize that he was a narrator for Disney when you were young and and, um, specifically the the Charlotte's Web that's animated, that's Rex Allen narrating and singing. And he grew up in Wilcox his whole life, and we're very proud of him still. And so we wanted to invite everyone in particular to check out Rex Allen Days and come and visit us two, two weekends away. It's the first full weekend of October, so it will be two weeks from now. So, um, it's confusing first and first full week weekend. So anyway, that is the sixth, seventh, and eighth. All right, so everybody, that's my announcement. And we are going to have a meeting at one PM today, which is a work session in the conference room. So, um, this meeting is adjourned.